February 27, 2017, and City Council call the order. Would you please stand with the Republican Party members in the moment of that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the February 13th meeting.
May I make a motion to approve minutes of February 13, 2017?
Second. It is moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid with the clerk's please call roll.
Gillon?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stice?
Yes.
Adams?
Next item on the agenda will be statements of the bills paid, 162,899,13.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the statement of bills paid in the amount of $162,899.13.
Second. It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid with the clerk's please call roll.
Gillon?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Stice?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be request for comments from the public. Get your name and address, you have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Jerry Carpenter, 11030 Riverview. I just recently learned that the 150 acres across the street from me, which is Bonner Springs, just sold. And I talked to Mike Webb last meeting. And that's Bonner Springs, and I guess, from what I hear, subsidy or Lane 4 or whatever bought that property from him. And the law, the way that the Lane 4 attorney was talking, that he needs apartments after apartments after apartments, he wants thousands of apartments up here. So I'm concerned about them putting in a bunch of apartments. One, I don't want to live across the street from them. But two, I'm really concerned about Bonner Springs hooking into our sewer, and if they put apartments in, that's a heck of a lot of capacity, excuse me, a lot of capacity that we'd lose on that. And I'm just wondering, you know, if they develop that, usually the developers don't buy the property unless they're ready to develop a plan or something on there, instead of sitting on it because they don't like their money sitting around like, you know. If they, if they have a plan, they're going to be first to hook on our sewer. What about the rest of the citizens of Edwardsville that are sitting up there, been waiting on a sewer for 15 years? Are they going to get all the capacity for that sewer? Or what are we going to do? Are we going to guarantee that all our citizens will be able to hook into that sewer? Are we going to have the capacity for that whole worth end of hooking into that? And the people of Edwardsville, are we going to give that all just to Bonner Springs?
We don't have any development, we have no answer, way to respond.
Well, Mike Webb said that they were, it was okay for them to hook onto that sewer, so...
Thank you. Get your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is Jeff Carson, 1022 Oak Drive, Kansas City, Kansas. And I think I've reached out to each one of you by email, a couple of you by phone call. I just want to express my concern for the lack of codes enforcement, specifically on the older section of Edwardsville, from Fourth Street to Ninth Street, from Pacific Street to Beach Street. I think I've sent you all photographs of specific instances. You know, having grown up in the area, and specifically down at my aunt's property, which I'm in the process of acquiring, it's disheartening to me to see the level of decay that's occurred in the older portion. And the problem that I see as a Realtor is that it affects home values, which affects your tax revenues when home values decline, it affects the tax revenues that come in. And just from the standpoint that it affects the homeowners that are around there, when they see the neglect going on, it becomes easier to neglect their property. And then what happens is it just becomes a bit of a suburban decay. And so that's my concern. And I know that, I think I just got an email from Zach about an hour and a half or so ago that is being looked into. I just hope that it becomes a priority for the council to, to, to address the codes violations that are going on on an ongoing basis and to keep this kind of decay from occurring in the city. I think it reflects poorly on the city when the, when the houses aren't taken care of, and when the city turns a blind eye to it. And I just hope that that, that attitude, I guess, changes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment on that. So can we, as council, since Mr. Carson reached out to each one of us individually, can we also be placed on that email thread to see the, the follow-up and what's, what is happening? Because I'll tell you, once I got the phone call and the pictures, today I drove down there and did some looking around, and it's concerning. I mean, on Beach Street halfway down, there's a fire hydrant, and there's a broken down, I think it's a PT Cruiser, setting one foot from the fire hydrant. You couldn't get to it if you had to. So there, there are things now through the codes violations that we need to, we need to look at, and it sounds like that we are. And I know that we have been shorthanded with Rick's injury, but I think those people that are in that area deserve to have, have those nice issues taken care of. We will make sure to follow up on that.
Are there any others? Okay, if not, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Your presentation regarding USD 204, 217, bonded.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Dan Bruegger, and I'm the superintendent of schools, USD 204, and I want to inform the public about our bond issue coming up for USD 204. So I've got a small slideshow, and then I'll answer questions in the audience. We also have Mr. Tim McGinnis, a school board member, longtime resident of Bonner Springs, David Toll, a current resident of Bonner Springs, but former longtime resident of Edwardsville, Kansas. So I'd like to thank them for coming tonight. For the first slide, I think it was my first year here that the Board of Education started talking about facilities and the need to look at facilities. So the board members, they set up to have one meeting a month at each school. So every year now, instead of having all the meetings at central office, we actually go on location to Edwardsville, Bonner Springs, a head start, all of our buildings, we have a board meeting. The second year I was here, the Board of Education actually toured each building and opened up every door, looked in every closet, and, and looked at the buildings, and came to the conclusion that what we probably need is a facility study, a study to look at and everything. So they gave me really three, three jobs to do. Number one was to look at our current financial situation and see what options there are for raising a bond that won't raise taxes. Everybody on the Board of Education lives in the community, I live in the community, and it is important for us to keep the middle levy flat. And number two, what are the things missing, what are the things we need? And then number three, look for the future. So that's what we started doing at that point in time. With that, we, we had a building committee meet of residents of all of our areas, and they came up with a bond plan that the Board approved about a month ago. So enrollment projections, if you look at enrollment projections, student growth, and we grow about 1% a year, on average for the last 20 years, which is about 25, 26 students. Sometimes we go up more, sometimes we go up less. This year is kind of a flat year. We, we started with the same, we're going to end up with about the same amount of kids we had the year before. It just really is hard to understand. But if you think of housing and those kind of things, if you think of every front door that's built, so we have duplexes being built over at the Delaware Ridge area, and we have a couple of duplexes being built over in Bonner Springs Elementary. So if you have to think of every front door, whether it's a duplex or a triplex, we get like .3 child. Now, they're not like Legos where you stack them up and make a whole child, but we get about a third of a child per front door. So what happens there is new houses sometimes bring in new kids, but sometimes they don't. Sometimes, I can think of my wife's aunt moved to one of the condos over Bonner Springs. She didn't bring any kids with her. Now, but I think of my house, too. I have a junior and senior in Bonner Springs, and in two years, that house will have no kids. So we kind of age out. So new houses bring new kids, but we also have all this aging out and these other things going on. But if you think of buildings, the front door brings .3. The apartment complexes, if they're very high-end, like the ones over Delaware Ridge, where they rent for $1,300 a month, which is really, make a nice house payment, that does not bring us a lot of kids out of there. Those are mostly young couples living in there. But the nice thing is, is they live there, they tend to buy houses there and that up. So, the next slide. The scope of work is number one, enhance the safety and security across the district, maximize space for growing student population, improve parking and traffic flow around district facilities, involve career and technical education programs to prepare students for the future. Our goal is to increase property value for the citizens, attract and retain residents and businesses, utilize quality updated facilities for community events, which our, our facilities, on any night of any week, our gyms are full. And if we had three more gyms, it'd be that much more full. So our, our properties use a lot in the community. How do you do a zero tax increase? So with the Board pushing for a bond issue, we had the opportunity to pay off our 2023 and 24 bonds early. So we paid those off early, which saved a tremendous amount of money, not paying interest on those. And then what we've done is we've created a bond issue where it's $39,350,000 that we can deal with the 0% increase on the middle levy. And so with that, we can update our schools without increasing local taxes. Any questions about that? This is our bill levy history, the last three years, we've been between 63 and 62. Most of the time, we vary in between 63 and 64. And we try to keep that very steady. And we always say that surprises are for Christmas, not for weddings. The other piece that always comes up on a size of a project this big is how can you guarantee that you're not going to spend all the money at the high school and spend none at PSE or Edwardsville? Well, we did a few different things. When I first started in this business, there was very limited ways to build, to bid out projects. You bid out a whole project, and you had to take the lowest bidder. But now we have an option of hiring a construction manager at risk. So three board members of education met with myself and Mr. Hanson and Mr. Shire, and we went through several firms, and we chose J.E. Dunn as our construction manager at risk. So it's a little complicated, but essentially what a construction manager at risk does is he gets a small percent of the total project, I think in this case it's between 2% and 3%, and then he also charges for construction management and those kinds of services upfront. So we have a contract, knowing exactly what we're going to pay him upfront. And then he takes the projects and he subcontract those out in a bid scenario. And so what that does is number one, he will give us a set price for each building and what it's going to take to do that work. Because he's a construction manager at risk, if the amount goes over, that's his at-risk part. If it goes under, we get that money back. And the other thing that's nice about this is as we go through this process, he will have meetings with local contractors, because we can actually downsize some of those projects because he's the construction manager at risk. And if there's people in one part of the paving or other smaller pieces, we'll work with them, give them the opportunity to bid on that. Where a big project, you don't necessarily get that piece. Finally, finally, we do have a contingency on our plan put to aside, so as bids come in from J.E. Dunn, if they hit too high, we have a contingency set aside so we get all the projects down. Okay? Part of the project's going to look like, well, Bonner Springs High School was built 53 years ago, and I know that because I'm 53 years old. So it's 1964, and some of the rooms look like 1964 still there. And I told my wife, and I was going over the presentation with her, and I said, you know, these rooms are starting to look an awful lot like me. And she goes, you know, Dan, does that mean they're getting larger? And I said, oh, no, no, not larger. But basically, everything in yellow is a redo. So it's carpet, ceiling, lights, cabinetry, those are all the re-dos. Areas in orange here are completely workovers. Gray areas are new construction. So if you look up here, and we're having a science edition on the very end of our science wing, we have six science classes now, we're going to add two more there. Part of our issue is, even if we wanted to hire a science teacher right now, we don't have lab space for them. So as we're growing, in the next year or two, we're going to have to add at least one, probably two science teachers, we need classrooms for those individuals. Special education, especially Level 1 and Level 2 students, and to define what a Level 1 and Level 2 student is, these are students who, who struggle learning basic skills. And those would be skills like laundry, cooking, those things. And we really work with those students a lot on vocational needs. So these are the students we take to Walgreens and different places so they can learn basic vocational skills, too. Right now, they're in kind of a, an area that, that over the years has been put into a special education classroom, sort of. We're going to move the home acc room and move them down here to where we can set up a kitchen, washer and dryer, and all the vocational pieces for those classes. Plus, there's a, a door right here to the parking lot. Several of these kids are in wheelchairs, and right now, we have to roll them all the way through, in and out of the building. This is just a nice, easy, quick pickup and drop-off. With that, we're going to gain four classrooms plus the two science classrooms. The counselor's office, has anybody been in the counselor's office at the high school?
30 years ago.
30 years ago. And you can go today. I think, my wife said my wife's closet because I got this much room. My wife's closet is as big as, as those counselors, they're like 150 square feet. So we need to make those bigger so we can have more, more meetings than them than a meeting room. So that, that's the top floor. Want to go ahead? The bottom floor, we're going to change out these locker rooms, which, which are very clean to be, but haven't changed since 1964. And so we're going to go in here, and we're going to add two locker rooms down there. And those locker rooms will not only be for PE, but those will be the locker rooms we use for the field, for football and soccer and baseball. I had somebody say, you know, Dan, aren't they kind of far away from, from the football field? And I said, well, you know, they're out for sports. They should be able to get from here to there. So that's going to be our addition there. The showers are going to be individual showers. Right now, we have group showers, nobody uses them, so we hope through individual showers that these students might. This area is more of our vocational technical program, we're going to bring that in, into classrooms. And the home acc room will go here, and this is our weight room right now. The big project for the high school is our college and career ready center right here. So when you think of college and career ready, I think of my son, he's graduated this year, he's gone all four years to Bonner Springs High School. He'll have 20, 20-plus credits that he gained by going to high school through our concurrent credit system. So as a parent, that's a large savings to me. I'm pretty sure his parents have sent their kids to college. Semester plus is a lot of money. The other thing is those credits are taught through Kansas City Community College and Newman University, they use the same textbooks, the same piece that everybody uses across the state. So they're good credits. But he's college and career ready now for that piece. But in this program, we're going to have a manufacturing, a house repair, a business entrepreneurship, or health and wellness stem, then a business health and wellness stem, then I'm missing one, I'll come up with that in a second. So what that's going to look like is, so for instance, house repair, what does that look like, I guess? How many people took shop when they were in school? And then what'd you, what'd you build in shop, Mr. Adams?
A hutch.
Ah, so if you wanted to replicate building a hutch in your garage, how much equipment would you have to buy?
A bunch.
A bunch. So we don't really build, we have a small group of furnishing, furnishers. But the other piece is we do a lot of home repair. This would be like a course or two you could take that may interest you in becoming a project manager, a carpenter, or those kinds of things. So my son took home repair, and we were moving my, my mom into a different living facility, and, and I had to change out the 220 on the dryer. And I went and got a new tail, but it wasn't telecoated, which, which left me out. I'm, I'm not that good an electrician. My son, though, said, you know, the gold goes here, and the two silvers go here. And then he taught me, which is really good, he says, you know, Dad, if you turn the breaker off and plug it in, then you turn the breaker back on, it'll just flip the breaker off. You won't get that spark while you plug it in. And so those are the things he learned in that course, which, which are really great things. And so this is the technical education center, which actually frees up the additional space at the high school. Any questions about that? Clark Middle School, once again, a general upgrade where there's yellow, orange, is different. At the high school, right now, we have what we call the secure entryway. So if you go to the high school, when the kids come in, we have six doors where they come in at, but after that, they lock down, and then you have to shift over here and walk through the office. So if you think of schools, maybe even up to five years ago, a lot of them, you just locked in the door, and it was your responsibility to go to the office as a parent or somebody else. Right now, it's all locked down, and they have to go through the office. We want to do that in all of our schools. So in Clark Middle School, we'll still have our opening here, and that's where the kids will come in, but after the kids are in, we're going to redevelop that, where you have to come in the office, check in. There's no way to bypass once you come in. The other thing, how many people have dropped kids off at Clark Middle School? It's, it's difficult, the best. And what we're going to do is put it in the hallway up here and have a drive so you can drop your kids off and then shoot out down the road, which should alleviate a lot of the high school and middle school traffic. The new additions are two new classrooms back here, we're going to revamp this area to get four classrooms. And then right in here, we're going to add a, a commons area, kind of a multipurpose room. Right now, the students eat lunch right here, and it's kind of an open commons area, it doesn't work very well. So lunch will be in here, also as we add additional physical education classes that can be used for this. That'll just be another multipurpose area where like the third and fourth graders could practice basketball in the evening. Okay? Any questions? Clark Middle School, right here is that drive I was talking about, and that doorway will be right here so parents can come in, drop off, and go out. Right now, you have to come in around here, drop off somewhere near, and try to get out. I was never so happy that my son started driving, and I was completely out of going up there in the morning. So that will help quite a bit. This is the addition of the multipurpose room and then the two classrooms. Okay? Bonner Springs Elementary is very landlocked, so we're just kind of updating the building right here. We have fourth grade classrooms that are much smaller than the others, and we have a kind of a park area, so we're going to make that bigger. Once again, we're going to put the secure entryway in at the, at the office area, and just a general update after that. We're going to square up the library, the libraries in all of our schools except the RE, our elementary libraries, always have a little twist to it. So we're going to square that up. The big thing for Bonner Springs Elementary, I'm going to switch the slide, is unlike Edwardsville, we only have two buses, a bus rider. So everybody else is kind of a drop-off. And with that in mind, this road is backed up everywhere. What we're going to do is we have a partial road here, we're just going to connect it to the parking lot, and we'll probably have the A through J parents drop off and pick up here, and then K through Z up there, give that an optional try. And just kind of relieve some of the traffic. It's still going to be congested here because at the end, there's only two options to go out. Okay? Edwardsville Elementary, we're going to do quite a bit of work, too. How many people have been to the office in Edwardsville Elementary School? So if you're a new parent enrolling in our office and you're waiting on somebody, there is actually no place to sit. Am I correct? And so what we're going to do is make that a second grade classroom for the future, we're going to take the library, and we're going to make this the office area. So when you come in, there'll be a place to sit. The merch will also have offices next to the principals, and we'll have the counselor, so it's kind of an office suite area where you can come in here as a parent and visit and all that area. And there'll be a secure entryway right here, like the other schools. We're going to take the current cafeteria and kitchen, and we're going to make that the new library. So if you think of the library, the media center being the center of school, it actually will be the center of school. It'll add quite a bit of space to it, and it'll be open without, in our current library, we have all these poles and piers that may be difficult to walk around. Up top is where we'll put our computer lab. The items in yellow are just updates. The blue classrooms are currently classrooms we use for other items, but if we need them, we're going to look for those for extra space. Right now, at Edwardsville, we run three to four classrooms per grade. We have the option of maybe going to a fifth at a point in the future if we continue to grow in that area, but, but right now, our guys can actually renovate these pieces. Right here is like a reading room, this is like a science lab and a few other things. With that, the community room at Edwardsville will become a special education suite, and we're going to move the cafeteria over here to the side, which really isn't in the parking lot, but it's next to the community room, if you can envision that. And then the kitchen will be behind it. For Edwardsville, we're going to keep the big tables and chairs for the marriage breakfast, but we're also going to make that available to the community for a community room. It's one site that gets used quite a bit, not so much during the school day. So really, the only person who usually uses it during the school day is me, and so what we'll do is make that available, just like the community room, it is upgraded. It'll be a little bit nicer because there'll be a kitchen next to it, and so if you're serving food, you can serve out of that kitchen and have that other door not interrupt the meeting after it's over. Then this is an additional space we're adding for the future. So, any questions about Edwardsville? Delaware Ridge, our newest school, not a lot of updates there, but really, what we're going to is a secure entryway. Over here in green, much like the blue rooms in Edwardsville, we're not going to build those right now, but we look for most of our growth to be along State Avenue, and to pick that growth up, it'll either have to be Delaware Ridge or Edwardsville. So we have those actually in a longer plan, so if growth occurs, we can add two classrooms on the very end and go with five classes in those schools. Okay? Not, not in the bond issue, but something we're working on. And then really, if I think about it, this kind of started the whole bond issue problem, is, is our bus park right here. How many people have gone to Bonner Springs High School football game? How many people park close? Yeah, if you park close, you're like a human being. So up here, projects occurring in the next three years, because we're going to take, and we're working with an individual to move our bus park across the road and actually take down that building, expand parking out to about here, which would give us about 155 additional parking spaces. It would make that a lot more accessible. Over here at the football field, we want to put in a concession stand with bathrooms, a baseball field's concession stand with bathrooms, and then upgrade the facility over here. Right now, for the baseball fields, we, we just have a portable lounge house for the rest of it. So that would really expand those facilities quite a bit. Any questions? The district will host a Melvin Bond election. It must be registered as a Y-Dot county voter by April 2nd. I need to rebound. I did bring Bill with me, so Bill could speak to you for a few minutes, if that's okay?
Well, he covered pretty well. I, I know most of you in here, I'm Bill Benson, and I've been Edwardsville for about 40-some years, and I do some community work through the Kiwanis. And our motto at the Kiwanis is building the community one child at a time. So when Dan asked me if I would kind of be the rep for the Edwardsville area for their improvement, I volunteered to do that. And my job is just kind of get out and explain to people that, about the bond issue, not raising their levy. Most of the older people that I've talked to, they really get nervous when you talk about school bonds for some reason, and they think it's going to be expensive. Where, where I'm trying to explain to them that we need to improve this, and we've got good schools now, we want to keep them that way. And it, it only helps the community grow. And so I'll be out putting out, looking for places and needing help for people on places to put signs up, and, and have you get out and talk to people, or give them my phone number, and I'll come and talk to them or whatever. So that's all that I'm doing right now. I'm handling the Edwardsville area, but I, I'm excited about spacing the tech schools and the vocational schools, because that's kind of, I taught in our Pictor apprenticeship program, I was a Pictor, and I taught in our program. And I know the importance of the technical schools, because there's a lot of kids that they, they do better in the technical programs, and they have more drive, and once they get in there, they learn that they need more science and more math, and will do some of the projects. So I'm really excited about that part of the bond issue, and the money's going to be spent for that. So, does anybody have any questions? So there again, if you need, if you need any signs or need any information or hand out to them, Dan can get ahold of me, or John can, or Tiny can get ahold of me, too, so I'll be glad to come and talk to anybody. Thank you.
Dan, Bill, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming and giving the presentation.
Okay, next slide will be advisory force.
So there again, if you need that, if you need any signs or need any information or handouts for them, Dan can get ahold of me, or John can, or Tiny can get ahold of me too, so I'll be glad to come and talk to anybody. Thank you.
Dan, Bill, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming and giving the presentation. Hey, can I ask you to be advisory force, city manager?
Just a couple of quick things. Probably have more than I have on my plate here, but one, kind of in reference to the question about community development, we are anticipating, not community, a community cleanup and issues. We are expecting our code enforcement officer to be back full-time on staff, I believe on the 7th of March is his return date. He should be able to be released for full duty with some just very limited limits for a while, so that should not prevent him from doing the code enforcement things. We know we are behind in that area, and we'll do our best to get caught up on that, especially as spring comes along, and it's always a challenging time.
Mike, would it be really possible to get some reports on progress, on community enforcement, some kind of statistics that we're tracking, as to how we're dealing with the resources that we're putting forward? And I think that'd be helpful for council, as we are considering budget and future budget, so we can see what that investment is getting us.
And if you remember, we, it had been a couple of years ago, we started down a program, and I was just saying, we didn't really get it completely off the ground, but you know, kind of a, we had talked about that, maybe some kind of quarterly report, or in one community I worked in, we had, they called it the dirty dozen list, so we kind of tried to identify maybe some of our cop issues. And it wasn't always just code enforcement, but you know, maybe they had dilapidated buildings, and they had code enforcement issues and other things, so that we could kind of focus our attention, because quite honestly, you could run ragged just trying to get to everything.
I recognize that some of the larger projects can be very consuming, but I think what we probably need to find is some kind of balance between the large rock projects and the small rock projects, so to speak.
And I think we have some of that stat, and Rick was making, and just with him out, some of that has just been hard to keep up with, so, but we do understand that. Especially when the weather comes on, we'll now start getting a lot of the high grass weeds, those types of issues will come up. One of the things you recall, we do each, basically in May, the third week of May, and we bring this up, is we do our annual cleanup day, and part of what we do with that, the police department and code enforcement will kind of actively let people know, hey, we see you have this thing, remember there's a cleanup day on this day, and we'll have these opportunities for you to get rid of some of that junk, or if you've got a junk car or things like that. We try to help give them those resources so they can have a place to go with that. So we anticipate we'll do our annual cleanup day, make sure that each of y'all will be there, helping as you always have, and we appreciate that. On next, at our next meeting, we intend to have kind of our annual report to the council. We would like to do that as a workshop at 6 o'clock, so that we can keep the regular meeting open, so that is our plan. We were probably going to do it a little bit different than we have in the past, so what we hope to do is give you maybe more of an overall report, more succinct maybe, and then we can hit the highlights, especially the public safety departments, and if we probably need to get into real details, we can do that, you know, that we have lots of things to do, and time is always limited, so we're trying to find ways that not only can we bring that to you, but we can also take that information and get it out to the social media, to the website, through other means, so the public also can kind of see in a very summarized, brief way, what's going on in our community and some of the things that we do that often times we don't even think about. So we'll continue to work on that. I will just say that we have been continuing to work, as far as Village South, on the work related to that, as far as the public improvement plans and the streets and those types of plans. Tammy and I met with the engineers today for about two and a half hours, kind of going over a series of comments, so they submitted plans with mid-comment, they submitted provisions, we had a few more comments, so I think that process is going along as anticipated, and hopefully you'll start to see some things move pretty quickly. Probably the sewer was the easiest one of them all, but some of that, because we've had that information for some time. I think with that, I will be available to answer any questions, but I would like Zach to hit a couple of things, including Edwardsville Day Report, he's kind of kept up with that. I know it seems like it's a ways off, but we're only about 60 days to Edwardsville Days, which is April 27th to 28th, or 28th to 29th, and I think it's going to be a larger event than we've had in the past, and we've got a lot of things going.
Yeah, but most of you are probably right, we assume the management of the event from the Chamber of Commerce, and we, most of our staff, we served on that planning committee anyway, so it just made the most sense for the city to take charge in that respect. And with that, came with a pretty aggressive approach to expand the festival. What was a one-night concert is now going to be a two-night concert, on both Friday night and Saturday night. We have headliners booked for both of those, opening acts booked for both of those nights. We're going to have the same attractions that have been popular in the past, the Kids' Bounce House carnival, the parade. We will be adding, we're talking with a group that announced a car show, but separate from a hot rod type car show, more of a novelty movie car type car show, where you'll see Kit or the Car Boo Boo Brothers or something to that effect. The barbecue contest, and really, the whole event's going to be moved to the central part of the city, right in front of City Hall and the community center, rather than being over at the city park, it's just the densest part of the city, the easiest for people to walk to. Inside the community center, we're going to have an indoor craft fair, which we just filled up, we'll have 24 different booths, different crafters there, and we're working out the logistics with Edwardsville Elementary right now to have a kids' art fair, we're hoping to have art on display from every single student in the elementary school, so we're telling the logistics on how to best display that. But yeah, as Mike said, it's going to be one of the bigger ones we've had in recent years, and we've been, staff's been at it for a couple of months now. We've been pretty aggressive in trying to get some sponsorship, preventing sponsorship opportunities with our private partners, so, leveraging partnerships we have there and sharing the cost, and I think everybody's really excited for it.
So Mayor, if you can ensure that we have dry weather. Superintendent, if you could do, help us to get a few people to the band to be part of our parade, that would be greatly appreciated, so. We just need some dry weather, something like that.
Oh, yes.
Now, having the crafters indoors, that was one of the things we think, you know, at least that can continue to go on. And we've got the stages here, we rented a stage, a covered stage, the lighting and those types of things, so we may be a little better weather resistant than we have in the past. Anytime you do an outdoor event, there's always a check. I don't know, Zach, did you have anything else for the starting stage?
No, just kind of walk, continue to walk, walk. Follow up with some of the code enforcement issues that were brought up tonight, and some of the outline ones that we know that we've got hanging out there, and we'll put together a memo for council, and that would be our answer.
Thank you. Keep it decent.
The only thing I have to report is, we were approved in last year's budget for a July hire. We started April 1st advertising in 2016. We made a conditional offer, and they passed the first preliminary stage of that, so it's taken this long, so we hope to have them probably in March reporting for duty, if all things progressive will have, and then maybe May academy, so we're all a few years in. So we continue to, we're not changing our standards whatsoever, so. We think we have a really good candidate, and we think he's going to be a good addition to the board convention, so that's what we're doing, plenty of busy work, so.
Thank you. Keep going.
As I briefed the council last month, the International Association of Fire Chiefs president has validated my appointment in the task force, it's going to go to Department of Labor, Revision Handbook for Fire Chiefs, so that can come down earlier this morning. And I remember the council talked about the trailers on Bluebird Lane. I did make contact with the lady there, there's access, those houses have been removed, so they are all over the highway, you can get it everywhere.
Tammy, anything in public works?
No, mine.
You sure? Okay. Dave's not here. Zach, I'm going to start with you.
What is the date of this big trash day?
It would be May 20th, I believe. That's the Thursday that it gets. And we do it on that third Saturday because that ties in with the municipal government household hazard relief, so they do it on the third Saturday, I believe, starting in May, so I think that's their first weekend of that way, where people have paints and household chemicals and things, and can bring themselves to that as well.
Last year, we had a pretty good response with our electronic waste auction, and probably we'd be reaching out to that same group and hopefully get even more of the pallet boxes.
If you do the same thing, I must say, we collected metals last year, I don't know if we ever discussed that.
Yeah, and metals, I want to say it was about three tons, and then...
Do you have a net profit on the deal?
I have to review that, because I don't...
Is that they were going to donate that to...
I think most of it, I think, yeah, I'll pull it, but I'll verify.
It'd be nice to know. I don't know if we've ever recorded that, any donations. It'd be a good thing to do, to be an issue, with that cause or some other relevant cause that's beneficial. It would be good too, if we, I know, obviously costs is an issue, but I think you have more dumpsters.
Sure.
Things like, last year seemed like we had maybe less than in the past. I know a part of it was the middle home, nonparticipative, we're still feeling that.
Yes, yeah. And part of our contract was, I don't know if that had gone until effective yet, last year, with Death and Ball provided a few of those containers, I think, at Milco, I mean, they have a set price, but we do have, I think, within the contract, a fixed price for those containers, it's a little less than just the average, you know, writing one for a day, so we will look at that. Somewhat we get limited to in space across the park, for them to send, they got to, you know, they can't send them just side by side, there's not enough for them to get in and out, it's a little bit tight in the park.
Right. I agree with code enforcement, and I know we're shorthanded and so forth, but people need to maintain a high level of pride in your community, that's part of it, so. Looking forward to hearing what we're planning on that particular.
I'd like to thank Dan and Bill for being here tonight and sharing the plan and vision for our students, whether it be our students at Edwardsville Elementary, or students that go on to Clark Middle, or Modern High. I think it's pretty exciting that the Board of Education and leadership of the school district are taking the plan for that, but to think of the future and think of our students and try to give them every opportunity, and that benefits our entire community. So thank you for that hard work and important work. Also thank folks that made comments here tonight, and especially around the city cleanup efforts. We have some work to do as a community, and I think you heard tonight, there is a commitment of support from the staff and the council to look for opportunities. We take pride in our city, I think everyone here in this room takes pride in the city, so without us, we wouldn't be here tonight. But sometimes we need that renewed focus, so thank you for bringing that to us today.
Mark it.
I want to second and agree with Chuck and Jason's comments, but also thank the staff for all the hard work. We do know there is a lot of moving parts going on, but with a collaborative effort, I think we can get some issues solved and addressed, because we do need to take pride. We do take pride in the city, but focuses have been on the north end, industrial, we have a lot of things, a lot of moving parts going, but together we can accomplish this. And Dan and Bill, thank you again, wonderful presentation. That's all.
About two weeks ago, I reached out to Chief Mathies to talk to him about some trash pickup in our area, in our whole community. And really, what I was wanting to talk to him about was the possibility, when I was with the Kansas City Police Department, in specifically the community policing unit, we had people that were assigned to community service, and on Saturdays, they would come out and pick up trash, that was part of their community service. Well, and I understand, and now having an in-depth conversation with the chief, that that, a city of our size, that may not work for us. I understand why it worked with KCK, but, and the chief had, we'd talked, and he had brought up a possibility, and maybe something that we might be able to look into, maybe hiring a summertime high school student that would be just dedicated to picking up trash, and that's all he would do. If you drive up and down our roads, we have a lot of trash. I don't know what in the world makes people think that it's okay just to drive down and throw out their styrofoam cup on the side of the road, and here's what happens, and this is, I'm not saying this bad about anybody that's doing mowing, but they're not getting off to pick them up. They mow over it, and that one cup becomes 30 pieces, and it's all over, and it just looks terrible. And I think, and this goes along with just what the gentleman said tonight about, and we have all said, about being prideful in our community, and it starts right there. You drive into our, you know, we talked about when we had the Death and Ball was changing over to waste management, how we were wanting to make sure that they picked up trash on 435. Well, it doesn't just stop on 435, you know, 110th Street, Edwardville Drive, you know, main places where people are just driving and winging their trash out the window, it looks terrible. So I would like to see if you guys might be able to put something together for maybe a high school student in the summertime, that what we might be able to try to figure out a way that we could utilize somebody to just pick up, keep trash picked up in our And Chief, I wanted to thank you for that conversation, that helped out a lot. And when you guys were talking about what you built in shop, well, my shop teacher was sitting in that back row back there, and I'm sure I got an A on what we built, and I'm sure it was something I was...
Getting you to pay attention sometimes, is what I'm saying.
But I want to thank you guys for the commitment to our schools, and it's important. And if we're expecting for kids to stay at school, it's hard enough just to keep them in school these days, and we should give them great places for them to study and places that they also can be proud to call a place they go to school. So thank you guys for that. That's all.
To your earlier point, before we let go of it, I do think that, especially since Tammy's been on board, and once Rick gets back from being on leave, we've had conversations amongst ourselves about different creative ways that we can start tackling some of the blight issues around town, if you want to call it blight issues, but more so than...
I think absolutely blight issues.
More so than, you know, we just need to make sure that to start entering the code violation process, there's been conversations amongst ourselves of, you know, having more localized cleanup events, or it's more in partnership with the state, or whatever, or this high school student idea that you brought up. I think there are different options out there, that especially once Rick gets back, and we're all at full staff capacity, that we've all been willing to be creative and see and find some solutions for some of these issues.
And I'd agree with that, but I don't want, because we have a staff member gets sick or gets injured and is gone, that that drop, that we have to sit and wait until they get back. So, I mean, that, anyway, I want to make sure that we're prepared.
And we do have some, you know, within our budget for the summertime, to do some summer help, and I think partially what Zach's saying is how do we, how can we utilize those kinds of resources throughout? And we had, we had, look, I think, and Chief Mathies talked about, you know, our own court... of using some community services, and there were some challenges there that makes it difficult for us from heart work to do it, but, you know, we didn't even use, it's been a while, but we had a citizen volunteer, where we used some from Lansing, I mean, as a cleanup of one of the cemeteries, and, you know, they were able to come down, and of course, they had a person with them, could, you know, stay with them, had all the requirements that they needed, so we'll continue to look at all those kind of options, and we'll see if we can get some financials together. Well, I can tell you, being firsthand involvement in, when I was in community policing, that was one of our roles that we did, was to go clean up areas, and a lot of people, they only need, they just need the encouragement, you know, they also fall in, they need to be reminded, just like Councilman Gillem said, you know, we need, thanks for bringing it to our attention. Some people just, it happens over time, you know, they stack a trash can here and a pallet there, and the next thing you know, it turns into a, you know, who knows what. They just need, sometimes they just need it to be moved off point, and they'll take care of it themselves, so, I mean.
Absolutely.
As long as we're out there and going after, I think if we can take care of it, we're not a big enough city that we're not able to go take care of these things, you know.
Dan and Bill, thank you again, appreciate you coming, really do. Staff, you know, this is some of the challenges we face as a city of our size, you know, even if we had Rick here, there's still gonna be shortcomings, that the city our size just can't handle some of that stuff, so, but anyway, appreciate your work and appreciate the comments, and with that, you're our dear.